October 20th, emergency school board meeting, 2020.
We could also recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Pat Grudy, President.
All right, thanks. Roll call, please.
Kim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay, so we got everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming on short notice. Our agenda tonight, we will open it up for public comment. And then we're going to review some recent health information. In fact, the real purpose of today's meeting is to really review and discuss and consider some important timely recommendations that came today from the Lake County Health Department that impact school districts and private schools. So for those of you who are online with us this evening, we may or may not take action tonight based on our discussions of that new information tonight. Okay? So our third agenda item will, what's that?
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay, third agenda item will review the recommendation from Lake County Department of Public Health. And then again, we may or may not take action related to that information, and then we'll adjourn. All right, any questions before we start? Okay, let's go to public comment. I understand there's about 11 letters we've received this evening.
There's 20.
Okay. Okay.
So I'll start and are we reading them all?
Mary Taduric Communications.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we're gonna start down that path, Mary.
Okay, our first letter is from Julia Johnson. Dear LHS teachers, staff, board, and administrators, thank you very much for all of your hard work and efforts in devising a hybrid learning model amidst a global pandemic. While my sophomore is choosing to learn remotely, I can appreciate how challenging it has been for all of you to pivot, course correct, and reinvent how you do everything. You did not ask for this virus, none of us did, yet you are clearly doing your best to keep students learning, even if it's not an ideal learning situation. We attended the outplay recently and were amazed by the creative, I'm sorry, the creativity, given the limitations of our current circumstances. We recognize that this is a challenging time for everyone, and especially for educators and students. Keep up the hard work. Sincerely and with gratitude, Julia Johnson.
Mary Taduric Communications.
The next message is from Ariel Schifrin. Hello, board members. During today's deliberations, I would like you to take into account the data provided by the Illinois Department of Public Health. The World Health Organization considers a positivity rate of five to be safe for reopening. This week's average in our region has been 7.5, two and a half points higher than the safe amount. This is also two points higher than the rate the week of this board's last meeting. COVID positivity is still too high in our area and is only rising. Next message is from Meredith Tarzinski to the Board of District 128. Thank you for convening this emergency session to consider the recent increase in COVID-19 cases throughout the Lake County region, as well as our own communities. I want to lend my voice to the movement to pause the move to hybrid for District 128, given the recent increases in positivity in Lake County and surrounding areas. The Lake County Health Department's recommendation that schools continue with remote learning, other notable districts' decisions to pivot back to remote learning at this time, and ultimately, the spike in our own district's positive cases. Such a decision will allow for the safety of all, students, teachers, and the entire community. For these reasons, I ask that the board consider a motion to pause next week's hybrid opening. Thank you. Our next message is from Sue Sarah. I am hopeful that the district is not going to make a panic decision to cancel hybrid learning because of a couple positive COVID cases in the district. Plenty of people have had COVID and will continue to get COVID regardless of whether they are in school or not. I am hopeful that cool heads will prevail. Publicly outing every single positive test of someone in the district is a blatant display of the merchandising of fear. At Vernon Hills, there will be approximately 15% of the student population in the building at any given time. There will be more than enough space for people to socially distance and have their mask on. Any decision to reverse the hybrid plan would go against everything the data and CDC suggests. The next message is from Kim Sveck, who says, what is D128 thinking about hybrid school now? Next message is from Richard Chip Thompson. Dear D128 School Board Members, first of all, thank you for all of your hard work that you are doing to keep our children safe and healthy. As a concerned parent, I am impressed by the dedication you have shown to your constituents. The recent seven-day and 14-day trends in Lake County are alarming, not because they are unprecedented, but because they far outpace any other county in the state. The most recent data, which you are surely examining tonight, suggests we are headed toward infection rates that may soon move the state back to Phase 3 of reopening. In charting this most recent spike, some residents will proudly point out that Libertyville itself is not as far along as the rest of the county. But how many of them confine themselves to businesses, restaurants, and other properties within the township limits? As we all know, the city limits of any suburb are only meaningful to tax dollars and utility providers. We all travel freely from suburb to suburb. Therefore, it is only a matter of time before Libertyville and Vernon Hills join the rest of the county. Why risk an even greater spread of infection by proceeding with the plan to move to hybrid learning? We are unlikely to last any longer than other schools such as Nutria, which prematurely opened their doors. Most importantly, as a teacher in a neighboring school district, it is troubling to me that the parents so anxious to reopen rarely seem to mention the threat to the adults in the building. These are individuals at greatest risk, yet their safety usually takes a backseat to the desire to, quote, "get back to normal." As a community, it is important that we choose the best course of action for all the members of the District 128 family. Schools can find creative ways to meet the social and emotional needs of students at risk without endangering the community at large. Thank you for your thoughtful attention to the concerns of all community members. The next message is from Michelle Gauss Enning. Thank you for all of your time and effort you are putting in to deal with the unprecedented issues this year has brought upon our school district. As a resident of Vernon Hills and a mom of a D128 student, I want to express my disapproval of the decision to move to the hybrid learning model. With the recent sharp increase in cases of COVID-19 in Lake County, the Lake County Department of Public Health's recommendation today that all schools move to virtual learning, along with the news that the VHS girls swim team today, I hope you will postpone the start of hybrid learning indefinitely. It is clearly unsafe to move to a hybrid model with the students in the building on a regular basis if it's not even possible to keep a smaller number of students safe in extracurricular activities. In addition, I have heard several accounts of students getting together with friends, not wearing masks, and definitely not keeping physical distance between them. With these behaviors going on, even the best of intentions and protective measures laid out at school will not prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools and our community. Please postpone hybrid learning until a time when there is a way to truly control the spread of COVID-19. The next message is from MJ Wang. Dear Board Members and Administrative Staff, given the current Lake County Health Department data, I am writing to express concern about the safety of bringing students and staff back to the building for a hybrid option next week. We have staff in both high schools from zip codes all over Lake County and even Wisconsin where numbers are surging. I feel that going ahead with the hybrid plan now is putting those staff, our students, their family, and our communities at risk. Must we wait to see people get sick, suffer severe illness, perhaps long-haul syndrome, or worse of all, death before we act? Rather than being reactive, I would like to see the board be proactive and listen to the Health Department, whose job it is to manage public health risks. This decision shouldn't be being made by parents and shouldn't be based on opinions. It should be made by professionals, and right now, they are telling us this isn't safe. The next message is from Seth Holsworth. Board, we appreciate the weight you have on your shoulders in the light of the recent expected increase in COVID numbers. Our children are the least vulnerable to the COVID-19 virus, yet they have been asked to carry the burden for those who are vulnerable for the last seven months. There does not seem to be any evidence that a hybrid learning environment contributes to the spread. We would request that you not change the earlier decision to return to school at the end of the month. The next message is from Kristen Cresswell Isberg. District 128 Board Members, while my student will remain remote regardless of your decision regarding reopening timing for hybrid classes, I will advocate for the board voting to continue with e-learning for all students at this time. The risk of teacher and staff exposure risked the student body, and the risk of contributing to accelerated community spread is too high when local county metrics are high and showing no signs of improving. This message is from Brian Dinkelberg. In light of the increase in cases of COVID-19 in the United States and in Lake County in particular, I urge the board members, I'm sorry, I urge the four board members who voted in favor of a hybrid choice option to reconsider their decision. COVID-19 has killed one in 1,500 people in the United States since March. Cases are on the rise, and with colder weather upon us, it has the potential to spread more easily to others. I understand that the possibility of spending an entire academic year learning remotely is not one any educator or administrator would happily accept. But it is a far better decision to err on the side of caution and delay any hybrid model from starting while cases are rising lest a student, teacher, or family member of a student or teacher contract this disease and suffer a catastrophic consequence. I understand people in leadership positions have to make difficult decisions. It will not be possible to satisfy everyone with whatever decision you make. However, I urge you to err on the side of keeping students, teachers, and faculty and their families safe. COVID fatigue on the part of some does not justify putting everyone in our community at risk. Please resist the urge to give in to short-term political pressure and make the right decision to keep everyone in our community healthy and safe. This message is from Stephen Schultz. We constantly hear, "Follow the science and look at the data." If this is your intent and you don't want to play politics, then you will open the schools for our kids. At this point in the pandemic, we know so much more than we did at the beginning. Closing everything down out of an abundance of caution was the right decision until we knew more and to prevent a possible overwhelming of the health system. We now see that kids under 24 are at less risk of serious illness from COVID than they were from the flu, and hospitals have plenty of capacity should it be needed. The data clearly shows this. Pediatric flu deaths are significantly higher than those from COVID during this pandemic. We have also seen the negative impacts of the lockdown and virtual school on these kids. For older teachers and those who may have underlying health conditions, let them stay home. For the other kids, I have to believe we can set up classrooms in a way that allows them to stay sufficiently distanced from kids. Thankfully, we don't even have to roll the dice and take that chance. We have examples to look at. The data from other states that have fully opened school without any significant illness and cases are not the same thing as illnesses. Our kids will be fine. They are doing more harm by, we are doing more harm by keeping the schools closed. I recognize this will take courage as the vocal minority will scream on social media that you are killing grandma, but it just isn't true. Please do the right thing as opposed to the politically easy thing. Thank you for your consideration. The next message is from Mike Mulligan. According to the Lake County Coronavirus Data Hub, since September 22nd, 2020, 28 days ago, Lake County has witnessed the following due to COVID-19. 3,793 new cases of coronavirus, of which humans younger than 40 saw the most new cases, 2,114, or 53%. Zero deaths in any human under the age of 40 years, I'm sorry, zero deaths in any human under 40 years of age. A total of nine deaths in humans older than 40 and younger than 70. A total of 15 deaths in humans older than 70 years of age. Cases and deaths by age strata below over the past 28 days. Forty-two deaths. Eleven in long-term, excuse me, long-term care facilities. Under 20, 0, 20 to 29, 0, 30 to 39, 0, 40 to 49, 3, 50 to 59, 3, 60 to 69, 3, 70 to 79, 5, 80 to 89, 4, 90 plus, 6. 3,793 new cases. Under 20, 668, 20 to 29, 742, 30 to 39, 604, 40 to 49, 525, 50 to 59, 582, 60 to 69, 364, 70 to 79, 164, 80 plus, 144. And... That was a little, oh, I'm sorry, I have one other. Sorry, different program. First of all, I want to thank you for making the necessary but difficult decision. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But difficult decision to offer only online learning for the first few months of this year. These are unprecedented and difficult times for everyone. And I am sincere when I tell you that as a parent of a child with autoimmune issues, not only did our family feel a sense of relief, we felt very cared for and supported by both our schools and our district. Online learning has been a blessing for our family as it has allowed our daughter Hayden to learn virtually with interaction with both her teachers and her peers, while keeping her safe and avoiding the inevitable anxiety that would have come from being in a classroom setting during this pandemic. This brings me to the reason why I am choosing to write you now. I am confused about the decision by both, I'm sorry. Little technical issue here. I am confused about the decision by both the district and the school to resume at least partial in-person learning at the end of October. Why now? After months of doing due diligence and asking our teachers to reinvent both their curriculum and their teaching methods, why are we asking for yet another disruption to the plan? The students whose parents support e-learning and are opting to continue it with their hybrid plan are the same parents who have supported their students in this format and have used this pandemic as an opportunity to teach their kids that they can do hard things. As difficult as this pandemic has been for all of us, we as parents must use this time as a way to empower each other and work together towards a common goal where we learn to overcome obstacles and experience the power of resiliency. It is our job as parents and educators to trust science where our health is concerned, not politics or parental or political pressure. I can deeply sympathize with the impossible position you have been put in during this already difficult time. In addition to keeping our own families safe, you have the added responsibility of dealing with parents on both sides of the political spectrum. However, we as parents must respectfully voice our opinions and those of us who have been supported, who have supported you during this time of necessary e-learning are now feeling like it's our turn to speak up. My daughter's brain was attacked by a coronavirus in 2009. When people talk about death rate versus recovery rate, they are completely ignoring the hundreds of thousands of people who, although they live, have spent years and years in both physical and mental recovery. For us, the effects have lasted 11 years. As a result of this horrific virus attacking my daughter's brain, Hayden lost all function and went blind. She had to go to the Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago to learn how to walk, talk, feed herself, and even had to be assisted in going to the bathroom. All this because a mother or father made the decision to send their child to school. And that sickness attacked my little three-and-a-half-year-old girl's brain and ravaged it. In our family, we have had to make the difficult but necessary decision to homeschool our daughter and our son during the very significantly dangerous flu seasons over the last 11 years. For us, we did it to protect our little girl, and it became second nature. We are all resilient and capable of doing what is necessary for the greater good of our family. Thank you for giving those of us who do not wish to send our kids back to in-person learning the choice for them to continue learning virtually. We are grateful to you and so appreciative of your compassion and understanding. However, I do feel it necessary for someone to go to bat for our teachers. Have they been given a choice? Who is their voice? Libertyville High School has just been given the incredible honor of being ranked the third-best high school in the nation. Without our amazing teachers and staff, this designation would not have been possible. If the teachers are forced to go back into the classroom and decide that they do not want to put themselves at risk and choose to leave the district and go to a district like Deerfield where, due to the rising numbers, they have gone all virtual, that would mean that the quality of D128 will suffer. Why are these teachers' lives not in consideration here? If the parent of a student makes the determination that it's okay for their kids to go out, not wear masks, and not socially distance, what makes you think that these same kids will follow rules in a school setting? What would prevent them from meeting up before school or carpooling or meeting up after school? To police this, would it be an impossible task? There were homecoming parties last weekend. Kids in all age groups are hanging out with friends, going to parties, all with the complicity of their parents. Our teachers didn't sign up to be frontline workers. Why are any of us even considering putting them at risk? They are being asked to go into buildings to teach classes to multiple, excuse me, multiple groups of kids on different days. They're therefore putting themselves at an even greater risk of exposure. What happens when our teachers get sick? What happens to their families, their spouses, their children, their elderly parents? Has anyone even considered that they or a member of their own family may have children or spouses or parents with underlying health or autoimmune issues? Why is this even on the table when our county, Lake County, is at a warning level with an over 8% positivity rate, and the state has seen four consecutive days when infection rates have broken new all-time records? The numbers are expected to increase exponentially in the next two weeks, and as we progress further into the fall and this year's flu season. Why is in-person learning even being considered? Please tell me, explain to me. What has changed in the last two months? Sadly, I think I know the answer. These same parents have formed an army of people to-
Hey, press, isn't it three minutes a letter? We're well over three minutes. Don't we, I mean-
Yeah, but Kevin, I'd agree to read them all, so let's just finish it.
These same parents have formed an army of people to apply pressure to our schools and our school administration through rallies in Cook Park, have taken to social media, and have even made and distributed signs that demand the schools reopen. I know for a fact that you are being inundated with irate letters from parents all saying that the school should reopen because our kids deserve to be in the classroom, and they deserve all the experiences that they are missing out on. My son Will is a senior, was a senior at LHS last year. He had no senior prom, no graduation. While difficult, this did not break him. He survived, he's happy. He elected to take a gap year, and he is thankful that the school took the necessary precautions to keep him and his friends and family safe. He also lived with parents that fully supported and respected the school's decision. Because we felt that way, he in turn felt that way. Further, we as parents made it clear that this pandemic is a global problem that we all must work together to get through. This is not about our kids' little universe. While it is important to maintain mental health, what we model as parents is what our kids see. Brian and I both felt it was our responsibility to teach our kids that we can get through hard times together and use this time as opportunity to discover new ways to both learn and grow both individually and as a family. What our kids, what our teachers, what our parents and communities deserve is a school board and administration who follows science and protects us all. What we deserve is leadership that protects us and doesn't succumb to pressure when we know for, in fact, the decision we make could potentially end a human life. All it is going to take is one, one last life, and by then, it will be one too many, too late. Worse, it will have been enabled by our school board and our administrators who knowingly made the conscious decision to put the health and safety of students, teachers, and our community at risk. Again, I want to stress to you how much I appreciate your support of the community of e-learning, not only for my daughter, but for all of the kids and parents who are practicing care and caution during this extremely difficult time. This is not a letter meant to criticize you in any way. You are our heroes to our family, and we understand and appreciate that this has not been easy and that you are supported and extremely valued. I would ask that as the numbers continue to grow up, go up, that you reevaluate the in-person decision for the health and safety of everyone involved, and that is signed by Lorelei Anderson.
Mary Taduric Communications.
And...
Mary Taduric Communications.
I apologize.
Mary Taduric Communications.
I had a little hiccup, and I think I might have missed one.
Mary Taduric Communications. Mary Taduric Communications. Mary Taduric Communications. Mary Taduric Communications. Mary Taduric Communications.
Mary, what if we, if you continue checking and then if we have missed one, then we can read it before the board adjourns? Pat, would that be okay, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine by me.
Okay.
Well, I can't hear what Mary's saying.
Mary's trying to talk, yeah. Mary, unmute. You're on mute, Mary.
I'm sorry. Let me regroup these and we can come back to them.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make one comment before we move on to the next agenda. I want everyone, we have a- I want everyone, we have, we have over a thousand people on, on this call, I think, tonight. Uh, and I'll make two comments. One, it's clear from the comments that as a community, we continue to be very split on this issue. All right, I've said that the last couple of board meetings and it's, it's clear that's very true. Um, but most importantly, I want everyone to realize that there are people, several of whom are on this call, that are working day and night knocking themselves out to do everything humanly possible to get our students back in the building. Uh, and I'm looking in particular at our two principals, um, who I think are really bearing the, the vast majority of the burden, not only to do the work, um, but also to keep their teams motivated and moving forward in this very challenging time. Um, and I, I know that teachers, many of whom may also be on the line tonight, are the real heroes in doing the work to actually make this happen. So, I realize the community is split, but I, I'm gonna appeal to the community tonight and say, this is the time when we really need to pull together. Regardless of what decision we make tonight or don't make tonight, um, I, I'm just gonna challenge everyone in the community to use this as an opportunity, not to further divide ourselves, which I realize is fashionable in our national politics, but really to dig deep and figure out what we as individual community members can do to bring this community together once and for all as we continue to struggle to get through this pandemic. It is not easy for anybody, whether you're on the school board, whether you're in the administration, whether you are a teacher, whether you are otherwise an employee of the district, whether you are a student of the district, whether you are a parent of the district, whether you are a friend of the district. It is difficult for everyone and no doubt, the world is getting COVID exhausted. But we need to pull together like never before to support each and every person involved in this and make this work for everyone. Okay? So I'm gonna appeal to the community and say, let's change the tone of this thing once and for all on social media, in person, in public, and wherever we are, to work together and make this happen. Okay? With that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lee for today's news.
Kevin, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we should be moving ahead. I think, I think it's not fair to the people who got their letters in. So Mary, have you, were you able to get some?
Yes. Uh, we actually have, Mary texted me there, uh, we have six other letters that we should read, uh, into the record before we move on. I think, Pat, that would be my-
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
And that will, then we'll have them all.
I apologize, I was gathering them very quickly right up to the seven o'clock mark. So, um, the next one is from Tom Glusick. This may not be a welcomed comment, but are sports right now considered essential? It seems like I'm hearing a lot of COVID being spread through sports. Health and safety first, please.
Mary Taduric Communications.
This message is from Dale Sherman. Dear Board members, thank you for your time and careful consideration of this difficult issue. It is far past the time to put the students' interests first. The teachers' union has clearly exerted a great deal of influence in past board decisions on this matter, and that should never have been allowed to happen. The union does not exist to put the students' interests first. The Board of Education does. The students need to be back in school, in person, being taught by our excellent teachers and learning from their peers. Untold damage has been, has already been done to our kids. Let's not do more, please. The numbers are inevitably going to go up this fall. There is more and better testing and the disease is becoming more contagious, yet far less deadly. COVID also remains almost no threat to children and next to no threat to the age cohort of our teachers. We can afford to give our teachers personal protective equipment to keep them safe. That PPE is working at Target, Jewel, restaurants, gyms, and dozens of other business, businesses. Oak Grove and Carmel Schools, just to cite two, two local examples, are making this work problem-free. D-128 can make it work too. Please remember your mission: Put the students' interests first. Open our schools safely, completely, and immediately.
Mary, what, who was the author of that letter again, please?
Sorry, it was Dale Sherman.
Thank you.
And this letter is from Ian Cajian. For my public comment, I will start my public comment with the hope that the board will do the right thing and continue with the hybrid model as planned. The metrics and reports from the county as a whole should not be applied to our community. The recent uptick in COVID cases should be no surprise. As quoted by Dr. Fauci back in June, quote, "As we get into September, October, November, when you have the complicating issues of having an influenza outbreak that invariably occurs every season." Bottom line, you can't predict it. It's going to depend on your capability and your effectiveness when you do get these little blips of infection, which we will invariably get, that you have the systems, the testing, the manpower to do the identification, isolation, and contact tracing. We have all, we have all of those resources in place. The governor and our Lake County Public Health Director have stated this on numerous occasions. We have to learn to live with COVID. Like it or not, this board is now a huge part of that process. School is essential for our children, families, and our community. It is time for our elected officials to take a leadership role and provide guidance for those they were sworn to serve. In this board's case, it is our children. According to the CDC, this virus has a 99.97% survivability rate for people zero to 19 years old and 99.5% for people 50 to 69 years old. The damage that is being done to our kids that want to be in school learning will continue to compound until those that we elected to govern our local agencies will have the courage to finally act. I am hoping that this board is daring enough. The next message is from Lisa Hannigan. I am writing to encourage you all to continue with the plan to stay hybrid schooling at the end of next week. COVID-19 is not going to disappear anytime soon and a vaccine is still months away. Our high schooler has lost valuable learning ground this year and his educational experience and emotional health will continue to plummet the longer he remains at home e-learning. He has enrolled in four AP classes this year and I can predict already that his test scores in May will not reflect the high caliber of teaching that we have come to expect from LHS. Please help our teens to live in community wisely by giving them an opportunity to social distance, wear masks, and wash their hands regularly while learning at school. They need to learn to live with COVID-19 around. Families cannot hide from it indefinitely. Our teens need to be learning in school where they can actually learn best, in person, not from solely using their Chromebooks. Please consider carefully what is best for our students. You all are called to educate them and they need to be educated together at school. Thanks for all of your planning and hard work. Please continue to implement the hybrid learning plan as originally planned. And the next message is from Karen Rogers. Would it be worth the time to put a volunteer committee together of parents and community members who are medical professionals to get their opinion on return to school? As a nurse, I'm working in a hospital every day. We are safe, even taking care of COVID patients. I feel like this is overblown and we are not using common sense anymore. Our children need to return to school sometime. COVID will be with us. We need to learn to live with it. I do understand what an undertaking it is to get the kids and staff back and I appreciate all of your hard work. Maybe we can take a look at our neighboring states and local private schools to see how they're making in-person learning work. Thank you for your time. And my final message is from Karen Brahms. Good evening. Today, we have seen instructions for the re-entry of hybrid learners, Health Department recommendations for virtual learning, and notice of positive cases in our district. The day is finishing on a very different note than it began, but none of this is surprising. The board and administration have a re-entry program that is flexible. Plans have been made for safer learning environments. Procedures are in place to minimize risk. Containment strategies exist, and we remain flexible. There may be times that virtual learning is essential. There may be times that hybrid learning can be offered. We all look forward to a time when a full return to school and work is an option. There are stages along the way, along the way. In the past two months, the district has successfully brought select classes into the building: science labs, performing arts, and fine arts do not translate well to a virtual environment. Many can be done with lower risk and in small groups. I encourage you to continue using this transitional model. Additional mitigation measures such as a mandatory ongoing testing program and required daily screening reports are reasonable and should be considered. In-person learning is a privilege we hope to have. We support D-128 while you work to safely support our kids. And that's it.
Thanks, Mary. Okay.
Pronto, Superintendent.
Okay, there are no further comments. Uh, first of all, thanks to everyone that contributed to public comment, uh, tonight and also the 1,000-plus, um, stakeholders that are, um, participating in a Zoom conference, uh, virtually tonight. And I want to take a minute and thank, uh, the school board for, um, their willingness and availability to, um, meet tonight, uh, in very rapid fashion. As we are all aware, uh, news travels very quickly and there are a number of other districts that have already made decisions about what they're doing and they're communicating, which of course, uh, raises, uh, interest and anxiety in our particular district. So our ability to, uh, quickly come together and review and discuss, um, uh, what it will look like moving forward is greatly appreciated and I thank the board for that. So, uh, I think we want to do several, uh, things tonight. I just want to quickly review decision-making, um, here in the district, not only for tonight but moving forward. Uh, want to touch base, uh, very quickly on the, um, recommendation that we received from the Lake County Health Department, um, essentially citing several, uh, areas of the letter that's publicly available to anyone, uh, on their website. Um, Pat has updated, uh, the data. Uh, Lake County Health Department updated some data today. Um, and so, uh, I, we can post that up tonight and Pat, um, just can walk us through us with, uh, um, his familiarity and, uh, expertise, um, with data. Um, and then I think, uh, we want to, um, have a discussion, uh, about, uh, the recommendation on my, how it might relate, uh, to our district, uh, after, uh, we review, um, the first part of the meeting. Um, and then, um, um, if the board asks for a recommendation, uh, I could make one on behalf of the administration following, uh, that conversation, uh, and discussion. So just a, a bit of clarity before we start tonight, I think Pat laid the, uh, purpose of the emergency meeting out tonight. And I just wanted to reinforce, I think strongly, on behalf of the board and the administration, that the discussion, uh, and any possible decision-making that may come as a result of that discussion tonight or later, uh, it would not be a decision, uh, to move away from, um, a previous decision to implement hybrid. Uh, the discussion would really be about the implementation dates or the implementation process from hybrid. Um, so we're not moving away from that decision. Uh, I, I can say on behalf of the administration, I think the entire staff, we look forward to a time, uh, when, uh, hopefully in the future, all the kids can come back to school and we can, uh, have more sense of, uh, uh, normalcy in what we're doing. Um, and in the meantime, that we can move toward a hybrid scenario that will allow us, uh, to bring larger number of students back, um, to the building. So I just want to make it clear that as we have the discussion tonight and perhaps, uh, discussions in the future, that, uh, tonight is not about, uh, moving away from the decision that the board made, uh, several weeks ago to, uh, move to hybrid, uh, but there may be discussion tonight and future times about the implementation, um, of that hybrid. Along with decision-making, I know that, um, a, a few people have already reached out to me and noted that in other districts, uh, superintendents seem to be making that decision, they're sending out letters, they're not having, uh, emergency board meetings. And so, I also want to be clear on decision-making here. We have chosen as a district, working together, uh, that opening decisions, for example, the decision that we made to, um, that we made, uh, in July to open in remote and decisions as such were made a couple of weeks ago about, uh, moving to, uh, a different version of learning, in that case hybrid, that, uh, we would make collectively. Uh, we would advise and recommend to the board be part of that discussion and the board would ultimately, ultimately make that decision. And to be clear, uh, once we start back at school, uh, the decision to close or modify at that point will be my decision as, uh, the superintendent. So the first part of the decision-making, we've agreed is the best decision-making model for our district. And we think it allows us to leverage the collective wisdom and experience, uh, of a number of, uh, uh, people that are on the Zoom call tonight, everyone that you see, um, on the screen in front of you. So that is the difference in starting up between our district and other districts. And once we move into, uh, a model, then a decision to, uh, close or move away from that model based on, uh, current data will fall to me, uh, as the superintendent. So I just want to be clear on that decision-making, uh, so somebody doesn't expect that they're just gonna get a letter from me instead of us meeting tonight. That is why we're meeting tonight and we value that working relationship with the board and what they bring to the table as part of the discussion, along with the district leadership team, which always includes, um, Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Kalentis. So we received, as the board is aware and you're all aware by now, uh, we received a recommendation from the Lake County Health Department Executive Director today, uh, Mark Fister, uh, that, uh, the public and private schools in Lake County, uh, move to, uh, virtual or remote, uh, learning, uh, based on several things in the district. So I just want to cite a few things in the letter. So I'm doing that accurately. And again, uh, you can pull that letter up while we're on the Zoom, uh, conference tonight if you'd like to, uh, take a look at it. According to Dr. Fister, we have been seeing substantial community transmission of COVID-19 in Lake County for seven consecutive days with rates of new cases that we haven't seen since the spring. Um, we continue to work closely with school superintendents to equip them with data and tools to make informed decisions. Now the decision is up to school districts based on their recommendation to close, to use their expertise and authority to make this difficult decision for the health and safety of the school communities and the greater, uh, community as a whole. And he goes on to cite, uh, that on October 11th, the seven-day rolling average daily incidence rate or new case rate in Lake County rose above 14 cases per 100,000 residents. Since then, the rate has risen sharply to over 20 cases per 100,000, over 14 new cases per day, per 100,000 residents, which is the same as 100 new cases per week per 100,000 residents is considered substantial community transmission. So that's their, um, uh, validation definition of substantial. Um, uh, Mr. Fister also, uh, noted that the Health Department's reckon, recommendation return to hybrid learning, once the county returns to the moderate level for seven consecutive days. Under the plan, the Health Department is also monitoring COVID-19 testing turn around time, which has been relatively stable since the summer. And Mr. Fister says that they do not take, uh, recommendation they're making lightly. Schools are being asked to utilize virtual learning, not because schools are the main driver of new infections, but because, um, levels of community transmission weren't extra measures to keep students, staff, and their families safe. Schools alone cannot bear this burden. We must take all personal responsible, uh, personal responsibility to keep this virus from spreading in any way. So, uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Fister, uh, first began to communicate with, uh, um, superintendents, uh, really late last week, uh, and then over the weekend regarding, um, you know, the possibility that we're looking at, uh, today, uh, based on data that, um, was yet to be posted up and yet to be analyzed, um, on their part. So, uh, we believe as a result of the recommendation that, um, we wanted to review that recommendation, have a discussion with the board tonight. we wanted to review that recommendation, have a discussion with the board tonight about the potential application or viability of that recommendation to both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School and our recent decision to implement hybrid learning plan that was also approved a couple of weeks ago on October twenty ninth. So I would ask probably Pat at this point, if Bryant can post the data up, then perhaps can you can walk the board through our local data here in the area.
Okay, so this data, as you know, I sent something out earlier today, probably about midday. And then I looked at the website before the meeting tonight and they had updated their data, which includes the incidence rate data through ten twenty and then the positivity rate data through ten sixteen. Okay? So this basically shows the Libertyville data and for the last, I believe it was one, two, three, four, probably five days, four or five days, Libertyville has actually gone through the hybrid region here and into the remote region with numbers exceeding, it's one point four per ten thousand or fourteen per hundred thousand residents. So that was a fairly significant shift from what it was even a couple of weeks ago. Now, truth be told, those numbers are being driven by, if I can just pull that data up on my screen here, really two days. There was a day back around October sixteenth, at least in the one database I had that showed thirteen cases. And then another on October eighteenth showing eight cases, when normally Libertyville has two, maybe three cases a day. So those two days are really what's driving these numbers up. And so one of the things that means is over the next couple of days, those two days will actually wash out of these numbers. And frankly, in the absence of that trend continuing, I would forecast that probably by Friday, if we start to see a more normal incident rate for Libertyville, you'll probably see that number come down below the one point four line. Okay? So that assumes we get the normal roughly two to three cases a day over the next couple of days. Okay? And then we'll see after that what happens. All right? On the next slide.
Hey, before you move on, go back to that last one. I just want to make sure, because I read these right. So this basically is saying, like you said, we have the spike, we're going to have a lot of testing, hopefully. I burn Vernon Hills and Libertyville over the next couple of days, starting tomorrow. So again, that will give us even more data points to potentially make a decision later if we want to defer decision. But just to try to understand this, this also says that technically we should have been in hybrid or in person based on their recommendation, right, their recommendation since pretty much forever.
Yeah. So now again, Kevin, looking, you can, we can always look back at the data and say what we should have done. All right? But I would say, you know, back last summer, when we were initially talking about that, we're looking at trends sort of like this and none of us knew whether this thing was going this way or whether this thing was going this way. All right? So history has now shown us that it pretty much went this way. All right? And honestly, it was the relative stability of this data. Again, this is a similar trend to what we're seeing now, a couple of bad days. But I think it was really the stability of this data that actually caused us to make the decision to go hybrid. And we said, hey, generally speaking, we're able to control this within our community at a level that supports hybrid, not only within our community, but frankly, even within Lake County. And let me make a comment on that. When we've looked at the zip codes that reflect not only our, our two high schools and the student population, we've also looked at the zip codes for, that represent our, our staff and teachers. And long story short there, because there are so many zip codes, that data essentially looks like the Lake County data. All right? So whereas it's true, our two communities in general have trended favorably relative to Lake County as a whole. If we look at our total population in the buildings, that Lake County data is actually more reflective of, of really our entire population. But you're right, Kevin. I mean, we've been operating in a, in a position here where, you know, we, we can pretty readily justify moving to a hybrid model and that's why we made the decision we did.
Okay. Yeah. Again, I just want to, I didn't know when they started putting this thing out. And this is the basis for their recommendation, I assume, one of their, one of their biggest bases. I know there's a couple of other bullet points, but this is a big guy. So I want to make sure that, I didn't know when this started popping. I know you've been monitoring this and I just wanted to make sure.
Recommendation to move to remote is now based on this. Lake County right now at the moment is pretty solidly in a remote, you know, remote region if this continues. If this can, if this continues to drop, then, you know, Lake County in a week or two actually would probably come down as well. All right. So the next one, Libertyville has also triggered the positivity rate. And, and, you know, two comments will make a lot of people think, just going back to the old one, that they, that the incidents statistics are no really, no longer really reasonable because of the inclusion of the antigen testing. I, I can't really speak to that. I, I think, you know, at least from my perspective, I'm paying a little more attention to this positivity rate because that really gets normalized, whether it's an antigen test or a PCR test. It's still numbers of, numbers of positives over total number of tests done. And you can see, you know, over the last, really since October, beginning of October, a pretty steady increase in positivity in Libertyville. And that, that is pretty concerning, I think. And they've now kind of breached that five percent threshold, which is really the IDPH target for, I forget what they classify, minimal risk or whatever it is. So again, we'll have to see whether or not that takes place. And I will, I, I would like to make a comment about tomorrow's testing. Okay? Just, just so that everybody understands it. You know, technically we can game the system here and, and, you know, if nobody got tested, we probably have fewer cases and maybe the data will look better. But I can tell you this, having asymptomatic, if those are asymptomatic or even symptomatic cases in our population, not getting them identified earlier is only going to hurt us long term. So I, I just want to make sure everybody understands the best thing we can do is get tested tomorrow to find those cases that are out there so we can mitigate the, the community spread of the virus. And, and I would encourage everybody that can to actually come out and get tested. All right. So then next two slides are Vernon Hills data. Again, just the primary zip code six oh oh six one. This Lake County data is the same. And Vernon Hills actually earlier in the months did very, very, for a very short period, trigger actually into a remote region. But again, that was a couple of days where they had an unusually large number of cases. They brought that down fairly quickly. All right? Which again, if we see that in Libertyville, we'll hopefully see the same thing happen. And now they're relatively stable in a hybrid zone. Last slide shows the latest positivity numbers. I think it's about four point three percent. So they're still hovering, hovering below. But again, you know, we saw a little bit of a spike late in September, quickly coming down. So these, these numbers will change. And again, they're changing because you're only seeing two, three cases a day in most of our, in both of our towns. Under normal circumstances, we're seeing two or three cases. So when you see something go to seven cases and then, or thirteen cases and a couple of days later, seven cases, that's why we're seeing these spikes. So if those don't continue, you know, I, I think we can still be relatively optimistic with respect to what's going on in our own community. The real question is with all of the things going on around in Lake County, will, will that trend continue or will it continue to stabilize? All right. So that, that's what I, that's what I've got at this point.
Yeah. Could you, could you talk a little bit about for us and the folks watching about tracking zip codes of staff members who live outside the county and, and, you know, how, how that, how do you factor that in?
I looked at the same data and again, this was all, the data that I had best access to was Lake County data. So we looked at all of the zip codes for our employees in Lake County. So that, that excluded people that say in McHenry County, it excluded people in Chicago and there were a number of zip codes there. But when I, when I ran the same reports for all of those zip codes together, as I said, the data almost completely overlapped the Lake County averages overall. All right? So I think it's fair to say that our total student slash employee population is well represented by the Lake County data. Whereas our student population, of course, is better represented by either the Libertyville or Vernon Hills data. And again, I haven't exhaustively done that with all the zip codes feeding all the high schools. I've really only used the two primary ones. But it's a little bit challenging to really interpret that data for all those zip codes. Because we may have one or two employees in a particular zip code. So it's a little bit hard to weight that data and really, really understand exactly how best to utilize it. The only thing I would say is just because we are on average better than Lake County, we can't ignore the fact that our employees are exposed in some of these other communities where there is a significantly higher risk. So, you know, frankly, ideally, I, I would like to implement a testing program where we can screen all of our employees in particular coming from other areas, but we just haven't been able to actually do that yet. But I know that was mentioned in some of the comments. We are continuing to explore a number of different avenues to make that happen. And we will continue to do that frankly, until we find a good option. All right? But that's why short term, we, we were able to get Lake County and IDPH to, to provide us with the two testing sites tomorrow and Wednesday. And if you haven't heard, we're also going to have a third testing date on Saturday, October thirty first. So again, I would encourage any and everybody that can be tested to please do so. It's free. It's PCR testing, so it's the best test you can get. And it can definitely help us if we can find within our population, you know, both symptomatic and asymptomatic spread of the virus. Okay. Any questions on the data? Any thoughts, comments?
Where will the testing be on the thirty first?
On the thirty first, it'll be at LHS. Okay. So it'll be the same thing, eight o'clock to four o'clock. We were able to get the Saturday date because we know tomorrow, we have a lot, a lot of employees work tomorrow and Thursday, a lot of employees working, a lot of students in school. We're going to try to accommodate them as best we can. But to, to be able to have it on a day when none of our students are in school, none of our teachers are teaching. I was grateful that the IDPH and Lake County people afforded us a Saturday date as well.
Pat, can you just review the hours and the locations for tomorrow and Thursdays?
Yeah. So it'll be from eight o'clock to four o'clock. There will be both drive up. In other words, you will drive up in your car, you will roll down your window, stay in your car. They'll take a nasal swab from you while you're in your car. And there will also be a walk up location. All right? So the location tomorrow is in the, I believe it's the East Lot. Is that the right geography? East Lot?
I think so.
Or, or people like me that grew up in the east that don't know the east, west, north, south, because all of our roads were.
Yes. Sorry, sorry, Dr. Grudy. It is the East Lot near the football stadium, kind of where the students park during a normal day of school.
Right. So that's how I would say it's a lot near the football stadium. So we're going to be starting to set up before eight o'clock and then starting to sample at eight o'clock. And we will sample until we, we either four o'clock or when they run out of supplies, which is estimated to be about five hundred tests. So my goal for tomorrow is to be done early. That would be the best thing that could happen for, for Libertyville tomorrow is to be done early. Okay? And believe me, if we go to Lake County and say we need more testing, they have been extremely accommodating. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Just to mention the Vernon Hills then on Thursday, same day, same times, East Lot also, which is the CDW side of our property.
Pat Grudy President.
Okay. And I'll say thanks in advance. A number of people from the community have volunteered to help with the events on Wednesday and Thursday. So I just want to say thanks to everybody that has volunteered already. It's great effort.
All right, Pat, thanks. And just to comment on a couple of other things and we'll let the board have some discussion. And we have the whole leadership team here that can participate in that discussion, of course. So as we've worked since July, although it seems like it's been years now since, and it's only been since July, but since we've started, we have dutiously followed the IDPH and related Lake County Health Department recommendations for our own good and the common good. And so part of the consideration or part of the conversation that we would have as administrative, administratively is the import or importance of that guidance moving forward, not only for our own communities, but knowing that we have people in the communities that move throughout the county and back and forth. So that would certainly be something that we would talk about and the power of that recommendation, if you will, and the request that comes with that recommendation as part of being in the county. Pat, you know, thanks for touching on the zip codes because that's something that we've just started to track recently moving forward. And again, we know we have people moving from community, community, and that will be something to track. But as you've noted, it's impossible to do a one to one kind of power comparison on that, given the number of, low number, high number of people may live in one community. Couple of other things, along with this recommendation, Mr. Fister has told us, the Executive Director at LCHD, that there will be further, likely further mitigation coming in the county. And the reason that we received specific recommendation or information regarding schools is because schools would not be covered under those mitigation plans. Mitigation would impact businesses, bars, restaurants, other businesses, those types of things. And schools are not covered directly under that. But one piece of crossover there is that we're currently analyzing is that if the county goes into mitigation, that schools would be similar in, similarly impacted by this part of that general mitigation. And that would be right now, Kevin, you will well, well remember our first conversation about fifty kids on a bus, fifty kids in a classroom, fifty kids early this summer, when, when things looked a lot better about bringing kids back to school. The number of fifth, the number of people in any one space would be taken down from fifty to twenty five. And then the percentage of capacity of fifty percent would be taken to twenty five percent capacity. So we're currently reviewing that for us. That may not, well, may, may well not be an issue for any of us, given that we're, you know, we're, we've provided choice for people and the numbers of kids that are coming either into a specific location or the building. But it is something that we will, you know, take a further look at. But I think my, my first blush would be that we would probably be okay there. You know, provided a definition is pretty, a definition of capacity, overall capacity is pretty straightforward. So I think we would be, you know, a, probably okay in that component. So just a couple of other comments to go with the recommendation and the data that Pat's covered. And then we'll talk about the county in, in general. So I think at this point, is there anything else that the leadership team, any general comments that you would want to make? Before perhaps the board has some discussion? Feel free to jump in, by the way. Okay. Anything I didn't touch on there initially? Okay. So Pat, I think we just opened it up for a discussion with the board. And again, if the board requests a recommendation at the end of that discussion, then we could certainly give you one.
Okay. So who from, anybody from the board like to comment?
Jump right in, please.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. A couple of things. In Prentice, I want to, I think you pointed out this migration from Lake County, Pat did do that data, but Prentice, Pat, Lisa and I know we've been talking with the teachers extensively and we know this group of people is probably the most conservative group of people. They will do nothing wrong in their counties. I'm a hundred percent certain of that. I mean, based upon these discussions we've had over the last month. So that migration from, of our employees, I'm, I'm not as concerned. I know there is a concern, but again, based upon their conservative nature and what I've heard from them and how safe they are and how safe of an environment they want to make it for our kids. I think that, I think they're living, living the Illinois the right way in terms of the pandemic. I, I struggle tonight to reverse course right now. I'm not saying we shouldn't reverse course, but I don't think we should be reactive. If you look at the data that Pat has given us, almost every spike is followed by a corresponding decrease. It's, it's an A. It's up, it's down. It's, it's, it's an A, it's up, it's down. Uh, and if you look at the long-term trends, the long-term trends say we should have been in hybrid or in school. So again, we, we voted to go to hybrid. I don't think we should make the decision tonight, but that's my personal opinion. I don't know what the recommendation will be. I don't think we should make the, the decision tonight. I think we have a board meeting on Monday. I think we will know more information on Monday. Uh, and regardless of which way we go, I would encourage us to continue down the path of getting the teachers back in the classroom. So they are ready to use that technology that Nick has given them, that we have given them. So when and if we do push back the implementation timeline, we're good to go. I know we had Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it was really Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, to really have the teachers come in and get comfortable and learn and things like that. I would really still encourage that, and I would also encourage the teachers uh, kind of to get back in the classroom just so they can be ready, because again, we're hearing a lot of concerns about the use of technology. Are they going to teach via Zoom or this? And we know Zoom is a delivery mechanism. For sure, we know that, but how are they going to integrate that? How are they going? And again, this would be a a way to maximize, make a bad a good if we do delay the implementation date. So, uh, that's all kind of I have to say.
Jim Batson, VP.
Uh, I'll jump in, and Kevin makes a, a, a good point. We do have a, a board meeting Monday night. Um, and we likely will have quite a bit more data by then. Uh, we'll be able to see how this trend is playing out. I guess I have a question in terms of if the, the, the trend pushes us towards considering postponing the hybrid. Is a decision Monday night um, enough time to, to do that? Um, so for example, if the numbers continue to, to, to increase, uh, or in, in the case of, uh, some of the numbers, uh, rebound and increase, where we might consider postponing that hybrid uh, start, would that give us enough time if we made a decision next Monday? Uh, to be able to do that? Because that, what, what I don't want to do is have this back and, you know, ha- uh, put the, the teachers and the students and everybody in the situation where we're jumping back and forth between hybrid and remote. I don't think that's fair to anybody, and I don't think that's fair to the, the learning environment. So um, I'll, I'll just leave that question out there, and I don't know, Prentice, or if anyone else has, has an answer, or even a, an opinion on that.
Jim, I'm going to write that down. Let's see what other, everybody else is saying, and then we can, we can roll back to that, and I want to kind of tap Tom and John a little bit on that one. You know, at the building level, logistically, so.
Don Carmichael, School Board.
Uh, I'll jump in.
Sure.
Um, I met Mark Pfister years ago when he was the, uh, Lake County Lymphologist, and he's a heck of a scientist. He has, uh, worked his way up over time, uh, so now he's the Executive Director, and I think he's very deserving of that role. And I'm listening to the words that he wrote in that letter, and Prentice, you already said them tonight, but I want to say it again. Schools are being asked to utilize virtual learning, not because schools are the main driver of new infections, but because the levels of community transmission warrant extra measures to keep our students, staff, and their families safe. Schools alone cannot bear this burden. We must all take personal responsibility to keep this virus from spreading in any way we can. The, uh, the recommendation from the Lake County Department of Public Health, uh, says that we should transition if we are in hybrid to remote. We are currently in remote. I would think that it would make sense to stay that way until the metrics are better. Um, I, I have no reason to question this man's authority. Uh, I know him personally, and I think that, uh, he's made the appropriate recommendation to stay in the remote.
Casey Rooney, School Board.
Thanks, Don.
Casey Rooney, School Board.
Who else?
I, I understand what you're saying, Don. Um, I, I do however, think that we need to stay on task with getting ready for hybrid when it happens. Um, I, with having a meeting next Monday, like Kevin said, we can reevaluate, because these numbers seem to change daily. Um, we can reevaluate as we get closer. I, I would hate to see us stop any progress towards being ready for hybrid. Um, and I res- I certainly respect Mr. Pfister's recommendations and his comments, uh, but at some point, we've got to be ready to, to be in hybrid, and I, I want to see that the teachers have the tools and they know how to use them, and they're ready to go. And I, I don't want to use a couple days of, of concerning numbers to to kind of pause that.
Karen Lundstedt, Secretary.
Yeah, to, to all of your points, um, and maybe this is pointed more at, at Tom and John. So as we continue to push toward, you know, the moving to hybrid learning, all the work that you've done, and, and all of our desire to get the kids back, um, are there? And because next week is when we were starting to change the way the days were going to be, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're going to be handled a little differently. Is that correct? That's right. Um, in your view, if we're wait, if we decide to wait to evaluate this completely until we have a little bit more data, a few more days of data, would it be your opinion that to continue with those, um, those days as planned, even if the numbers show that we absolutely must, uh, make a change in when we implement the beginning of the actual student attendance? Or would it be better? Would that, would that be worth doing? Again, keeping, keeping moving toward, um, the teachers, like, as Kevin said, getting to know how to use the technology within their classrooms? Just what are your thoughts on, on that? Um, even if we have to push back because of the recommendations of the Lake County Health Department and continuing to get more numbers, uh, even if that has to get pushed back a bit, um, would it still be worth doing the beginning of the week next week?
Tom Coolen, Test Principal.
I, I can respond, um, for LHS, and I'm sure John's in a similar place, but um, yeah, since we, um, we always knew we would be moving towards, um, greater levels of in-person learning. And so, um, when that accelerated, you know, with the, the vote that you took two weeks ago, obviously, our teams went into, um, overdrive and making all, we'd been working all along to kind of build our buildings and prepare for that. But of course, um, once the timeline became, uh, clear, then we went into overdrive, working on final preparations. Um, we are definitely in the um, kind of final phases of those final preparations, and, um, my sense is that, um, we're looking at a future of a combination of hybrid, um, and e-school. And that, um, you know, what all the experts are saying is the virus is going to be with us for a while. And that, um, schools need to be prepared to deliver, um, all kinds of instruction from full in-person to a hybrid model where we have to reduce student populations to full e-school. Um, so we at LHS are going to be ready, um, whenever you tell us the date is to start hybrid, we'll be ready to hit that target and, and hit that date. If that is postponed, we will not stop our preparations and our trainings. Um, we will continue those things because we know that, um, that model of bringing students back and increasing the number is, uh, coming soon, and we welcome that and are excited about that. So we would definitely continue to, to do our preparations.
John.
John Guo-Yao, Principal.
Yeah, I guess, um, it's, it's a good question. I, I agree with Tom that we have been in hyperdrive uh, since, you know, since the board charged us with, 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 with getting ready. And I would say we're getting close, uh, but any additional time that we have to prepare is welcome time. I'm just going to be honest with you. Not that, not that we're not going to be ready to go to have teachers in next week, uh, but uh, the more time we have, the more prepared we'll be. I would say this, um, you know, teachers are used to pivoting to, um, asynchronous day or teacher-directed days and can do so you know, pretty quickly. We've proven that already. We've had, we've had instances this year where we've day in and day out have switched from, uh, a block schedule to an asynchronous or a teacher-directed to an asynchronous. And so I guess my point is, if, if you were to say, uh, you know, let's delay the start, we would have extra time to prepare, and at any moment that you said we were good to go, we could put in two asynchronous days and get teachers in, uh, to prepare. So I, I don't think there's anything magical about the two days uh, that we have in place. I think we need two days to get teachers in and ready to go. Um, and I think the closer those two days are to the actual start date of a hybrid, makes it that much more, um, kind of timely. Uh, that gives our, our tech guys that much more time to get all those classrooms set and ready to go with multiple monitors, with, uh, plastic, all of that stuff. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's what I would have to say.
Hey Rita, just to follow up on your question.
Pranjus Lee Superintendent.
With your multiple levels of expertise on a number of things. Um, so I think the question at hand, um, is if, if we did an adaptive pause and the start date for remote was out, you know, whenever that would be, um, could we still use next Tuesday and Wednesday as preparation days for when we do start?
Um. Rita Fisher, Curriculum.
Yeah, I would, um, I would, um, concur with John that, uh, the schedule is designed to really adjust the e-school calendar to meet up with the, or the e-school schedule to meet up with the hybrid schedule, um, so that, uh, when we do have an, a teacher-directed day and then asynchronous days that we're, um, we're having that, um, occur in a way that has the students from periods zero through four and the students from periods five through eight. Uh, those two orange and blue days occurring, um, in a way that we're not, we're not cutting off one. So, so next week, we have Monday as a teacher-directed day, then we have two asynchronous days. And we did that so that Thursday and Friday would be the new hybrid orange and block days. And that that would seamlessly flow into the start of hybrid. So if we were to put a pause, I would recommend taking a look at when hybrid actually, um, was going to begin and design the teacher-directed and asynchronous days to line up so that we have that same seamless transition into the new hybrid block schedule. If that makes sense. I, so we, we purposely designed next week to ensure that students had a really smooth transition to, uh, the new schedule with, uh, the, the block days occurring at the two days at the end of next week. And I'm sorry for my barking dog. Um, so, uh, so, so, uh, again, I, I think that, uh, the that teachers and the buildings are going to be, uh, ready to go with hybrids, but if there were a delay, uh, looking at each day before the real implementation of hybrid and aligning the schedule to match that implementation would be best. Just like we did, uh, with the plan for next week.
Karen Lundstedt, Secretary.
So, so part of my question, though, I don't think I articulated this very well, sorry, um, would it make any sense if we were to postpone the start date and then also postpone the asynchronous? You know, the, the couple of days beforehand, as you guys have said, is super important. Is there any value in having the teachers still begin to teach with the new equipment from their classrooms, even if the kids aren't there? I guess is sort of a little bit of my question for that practice, for just, just getting that ro- rolling, or does that not really make that much difference? That was part of my question that I didn't ask her.
Rita Fisher, Curriculum.
I, I would say that the teachers, um, can transition whenever that hybrid is going to start, and if, if the decision was made uh, because of the recommendation not to open schools, um, that, uh, it, it, to me, wouldn't make sense to bring the teachers in absence of the students for that same reason. It would make sense to bring the teachers in just in, uh, you know, in a timely way whenever hybrid would start, not next week if the students weren't starting next week.
Pat Gruddy, President.
By, by the way, just, just to be clear, I mean, I went by both buildings today. There's a lot of cars in the parking lot. So there, there are a lot of people.
Yeah, there, there are teachers who are currently teaching from the buildings, um, and for those who aren't, the uh, technology that will be set up in their classroom is similar to what they've been using, uh, many of them from teaching from home. So again, I think that the two days that we planned are perfectly appropriate. But in my opinion, those two days would be best, uh, offered, uh, just as we begin, um, hybrid with the students. Whenever that is.
Okay, thanks.
Pat Gruddy, President.
Let me just.
I think, go ahead, Pat, I'm sorry.
I was going to just throw out a few thoughts. I mean, I, I think tonight, what we really want to do is get some direction on three different options. Okay, one is stay the course. Alright, it's October 29th or bust at this point, okay? Just keep going. Uh, the other option that we've talked about a little bit is, oh, let's wait and see the data for a couple of days before we actually make that decision to either go or, or delay. And the third option is, alright, we have data now, let's just delay, okay? Um, so I really want to get kind of a sense of, let me, I want to make one comment about waiting for the data. So technically, per the Lake County, I'll call it protocol, okay? Uh, they trigger a change from, say, virtual to remote when you've triggered an event, let's say, for seven consecutive days. Alright, so that threshold of 1.4% thousand on the incidents. If you've been above that for seven days, which Lake County now has been, that triggered the change from being hybrid to virtual, okay? Libertyville, I think, is currently at five days above that number. So technically, if they went down tomorrow and stayed down, they never would have triggered an event that would, would move us technically from hybrid to virtual. Um, my suspicion is they won't get there at least over the next two days, because even with zero cases tomorrow and Thursday, um, Thursday, they'd still be very close to that threshold, and I think the chances of zero cases are pretty low. They haven't had that for a while. Alright, so most likely Libertyville is going to trigger that seven days above, above virtual. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, above hybrid. So that means, um, then technically you would, you would go back to virtual, okay? And then you would need seven consecutive days, um, excuse me, hold on one second. You would need seven consecutive days then above the line again before you would go back to hybrid. Does that make sense? Alright, so the scenarios that we plan, I mean, Libertyville most likely going to trigger that move from hybrid to virtual. Technically, it would then be at least a week of all good data before that would really justify moving back to hybrid. So that would basically take us right up until the 29th, or very close to that, if all goes perfectly, okay? Um, so that's kind of the scenario of, well, let's wait till Monday. What are we going to see? Monday, we'll see whether or not there's any hope of that happening, or Monday, we'll see no, it's not even happening, it could go out further. Alright, so I just want to kind of throw that out there. Uh, and I think that's.
But also Monday, Monday's a different, we're changing what we're doing in the school on Monday too. So, so that's a piece of the puzzle.
Uh, in terms of bringing people back, teachers.
Right, I mean, we're not following the normal.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
Right, and that, that gets back to the question that I raised earlier, and that is if we waited to make some kind of decision till Monday night.
Jim Batson, VP.
It doesn't seem that that would help our process, because the process would have already started to move to hybrid. So I, I was just trying to gauge a sense of urgency while we want to have all the data we, we can have. We can also wait forever for that data, and you know, it, it, it will never, it, it'll all always fluctuate, but really, the crux of my question was if we decided to not do anything tonight and wait till Monday, then it wouldn't help us in that we'd already be headed down that path of the, the hybrid, and it would be somewhat disruptive to to make any changes at that point in time.
Lisa Hassel, School Board.
So, um, if I could, I, I did want to, um, weigh in, and then I, I really do want to hear the recommendations of the administration. Um, I, I really want to start by thanking the administration and the teachers. the administration and the teachers for your extraordinary efforts, not just in the last couple of weeks, but since March. Um, we're all COVID exhausted, but I think, uh, you guys have really shown the stamina and the determination to do what's right by our students, and I thank you for that. Um, I really want to echo Pat's comments that we are all in this together. We have one enemy and that's coronavirus, not each other. And I thank everybody for taking a pause and a deep breath before we vilify anybody that sees this situation differently than they do. Um, we are one community. Um, the Lake County Public Health Department has been a faithful partner of ours. And, uh, I have heard repeatedly since March that they have worked with us and as evidenced up to this day with setting up mobile testing sites, not just the two days that were requested this week, but when we said we need another one, uh, they gave it to us. And they do not, um, as Mr. Pfister said, make this recommendation lightly or because they somehow misconstrue that schools are a source of community spread. Um, I really appreciate the fact that they have left the choice in our hands. And out of the utmost respect for my board colleagues, I want you to know that I don't look at this as an opportunity to revise the decision that we made to, um, enter remote learning, uh, sorry, enter hybrid learning. I, I know that I did not, uh, I unanimously with, with, along with you voted for the hybrid plan that was presented. I happened not to agree with the timeline, um, but I, I want you to hear loud and clear that I am not looking at this opportunistically like, oh, boy, the Lake County, that gives us permission to throw out something that I don't agree with. I, I have the utmost respect for the system that we have of a board of seven. And I will always go by what the majority of us want. Um, I think it's important to echo Pat's comments about the statistics. Lake County doesn't recommend this because of one or two days of data. The data is specifically designed on a seven-day basis. So as much as I would love to not deal with this, like all of us are exhausted from this and push this off until we have more information, I don't think waiting until Monday is advisable. Uh, we have a faithful partner in Lake County Health Department. And we are standing on the precipice along with the rest of the county, along with Cook County, along with the entire state of Illinois and with neighboring states. And we are looking down this precipice. And just because we have approached this decision and we're ready to move into hybrid, when the public health experts say we are asking you to pause, I think we don't stand here and hold our ground and wait for the ground to crumble beneath us. We take a step back. We pause because that's what the public experts are telling us to do. So I look forward to hearing, uh, the administration's recommendations and the answers to the questions that my colleagues on the board have posed.
Karen Lundstedt secretary.
I just want to speak to what Lisa said too. And I, I, um, I'm very excited and anxious to move to the hybrid model. I think, uh, it's going to be tough and a big challenge. And I, I think that we have what it takes to, to get there and to go, um, to that model and, and have it have some benefit, uh, certainly for our students. I also agree that we must not ignore what we've just received from Lake County Health Department. I appreciate John's comments about, uh, respecting the director there. And again, we're, we're in this together. We're going to move to hybrid. And we're going to do it in the safest way we possibly can. We're going to take the information that we've been given and weigh that information as best we can, trying to think of the entirety of it and move forward together. Um, but now what is showing right now is that we're trending in a certain direction. My greatest hope is that that will change. But right now, that's what we've got. And I, I just, uh, I think we can take this and still move forward together, uh, whether we decide to postpone the beginning of hybrid or, you know, whatever we decide to do. But I don't think that we can ignore this important information that we've been given. It's important directives that we've been given. Um, and I don't think that, you know, it's, I, I just think it's a really important part of, of the whole. And that's what we're really here to do is to look at the whole and to come up with the best, uh, solution for that. So, thanks, Lisa.
Kevin Huber, school board.
Hey, hey, Prentice, a couple of questions and actually want to be for Pat. Uh, I want to make sure I understand the Lake, the Lake County is a suggestion though, right? Not a mandate. It's a suggestion. It's like it was over the whole summer. It was just suggested based upon the data.
Kevin, it's a, a recommendation. It's, it's, it's not what you, uh, what you're looking for. Is it a guideline requirement, right? It's a recommendation.
Right. And the governor reiterated that today. If you watch his press conference, that it's definitely at the hands. In fact, there's some schools in DuPage, DuPage Health Department said shut it down. And some of the schools chose not to because they, whatever their decision-making process was, is their own decision-making process. But Pat, you brought up something earlier and I, I gotta ask that question. You said there were two big blips in the Libertyville data. I think you said the 16th and the 19th.
Yeah, there's actually, uh, and, and again, um,
Because those, well, when those roll off the seven-day rolling average, as we know, that's why we have a bunch of As here. When the big blips fall out, and again, you fall below the line. And that's just the way that's, that's just the way it is. So I, again, back to the issue of I, I want to make sure the blip for the 16th, you said, and the 19th and because the 16th, though.
In the last seven days, there have actually been three days that stand out. Um, one, one had eight cases, one had 13 and one had seven. All right. And just to be clear, that database is one that I got, um, through the Daily Herald records. So, you know, I'm sure somebody will challenge me on, on the specific numbers, but that's, that's what it said on the daily number of cases. So I modeled it and I said, okay, if you got no cases tomorrow and Thursday, what would happen? Uh, Libertyville would be still out of spec on, on Wednesday. Uh, that, that's the 14 spec or the 1.4 spec. And they would be just, just in, I believe, on Thursday. Okay. But they have only had zero cases, let's say, it looks like one day in most of, in, in all of October. All right. So there, there usually one, two or three cases on average, um, for that. So if I model that, if I even say that they get two cases a day for the next couple of days, um, that means they won't be back in until Friday.
Yeah, we're, okay. No, I, I just want to make sure because if you look at Vernon Hills, they had the big blip and they're within that. They're within the range. I suspect Libertyville is going to be hovering right around the range, a little bit above, a little bit below. It's certainly not going to be like Lake County in total, which is, there's no question, Lake County in total says the suggestion is remote. But Libertyville is by far not dramatic enough to say, oh yeah, it's, we need to go to remote. In fact, you could argue that it's going to fall below remote. Uh, when, when those lips fall off, depending on how the next week of data goes.
Yeah, but let's just play that out. Let, let's assume by Friday, Libertyville is back below the 1.4 spec. Okay.
Okay. Pat Grudy president.
Um, and again, as, as I've said to, you know, some, we can't go by the specs when we like them and not go by the specs we don't like. So for the moment, I think we just have to assume we're using the, the, uh, Lake County published specifications because they've got people much more expert in sending specifications at us. And we should even follow their process, which is when you go seven days out, you flip to the other, other, uh, approach and you got to get seven days back in in order to jump back to where you were. All right. So imagine Friday, uh, we're back in the territory of hybrid. We need to go seven days then to technically flip from what was then virtual to now hybrid. So that takes us to one, two, three, four, five, six, next Friday. Okay. Now, so we're talking about an implementation program that says on Monday, Tuesday, the teachers are back in. Wednesday is an asynchronous day and Thursday, Friday, the students are back in. So that would mean under the best circumstances to, as we see it tonight, best case scenario is we make a, a final go-no-go on Friday. Um, because the data supports it, which means Friday night, everybody's getting a, a message. It says be in class on Monday. And they do their thing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is the asynchronous day and we're back in on Thursday, Friday.
Um, we say everybody, we're talking just the teachers now, aren't in the building.
Teachers.
Right.
Which I, which I would argue might be.
Pat Grudy president.
I don't know. Um, disruptive to say the least. I mean, again, I'm a little bit concerned that we're going to just give a last minute decision. It says, okay, it's Friday afternoon. They just published the metrics at four, five o'clock. We're good. Everybody first thing Monday morning. I mean, we can do that. But I know there's part of me that says, is that really the smartest thing to do? So I mean, I just want that out there as as an understanding of what we're really looking at.
No, and I, I don't know if I disagree with that. I may disagree with Rita though. And I think that goes back to my premise of if, if we believe in some of us do and some of us don't, but, and again, this is where I disagree with Rita. If we believe that the teachers should start on Monday, assuming they're going to be in the building, teaching from the building going forward, whether it's hybrid or remote, whatever it may be, isn't that a better assumption in order for us to be able to pivot at any point in time? Because it's not fair to the teachers. You're exactly right. When they have daycare issues and childcare issues and things like that, to, to be going, oh, yes, oh, no, yes, oh, no. It'd be a, to me, a lot better message saying, hey, can you get starting Monday, get in the building to teach? Where, wherever it's going to be, it could be Zoom remote, all the kids, and it could be that way through break and we don't know. But that way they have a plan as the teachers and they can plan their lives as well because they have spouses that depend upon them. They have parents that depend upon them. They have kids they have to take care of. And for us to deviate and say, okay, we're going to put the decision off and things like that. I don't think that's fair, but that's why I raised the issue earlier. I appreciate Rita's opinion on it. So I, and again, that's, that's consistent with what Rita said when we talked earlier. Uh, so I, I just, so I, I would just have to disagree on that one. I think that gives us a better opportunities of board to make those decisions down the line if our employees are ready to go. And I appreciate John and Tom saying the buildings are good. Uh, we could certainly use more time, but.
Rita Fisher curriculum.
So I, I just.
Clarify, uh, may I just clarify that, uh, the day that teachers were, um, Monday was an optional day for interest in attendance and teachers according to our plan are required to come back on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and just.
Yeah.
Uh, my comment on that i- is, and I, I see what you, what you're getting at, Kevin. I, I understand that, you know, we don't want to
Jim Batson VP.
Keep, um, people on the edge of their seats waiting to know tomorrow, what am I doing? You know, we, we, we want to have a, a plan in place so that they can plan ahead. And that's, it's not fair to, to to make last minute, uh, uh, adjustments. But I think the, the concern I had was the Tuesday, Wednesday of next week being true planning days for adjusting from the full remote to a hybrid. And that that's really not valuable if we're going to stay in remote for any length of time. And so those two days, um, we should position the two days before we actually pivot to, to hybrid rather than using them next week in sort of preparation for hybrid. And I agree, we, we're going to go to hybrid at some point in time, whether it's next week or next month or whenever that is. That's, that's our goal here and we all agree with that. But those two days, I don't want to, I don't want to say waste, but I wouldn't want to use those two days, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week if we're not certain the students are going to be in the building on Thursday to start the hybrid because that's really the purpose of those two days.
Kevin Huber, school board.
I agree, Jim. I, I think you and I are, I think I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
All right. Um, any other comments people want to make? Otherwise I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a recommendation here.
Pat Grudy president.
Okay. Uh, do you got, do you have a recommendation there, Dr. Lee?
Uh, yes. And, uh, I want to thank the board again. You know, one, one of the things as I'm in my last year, um, one of the things that I have so appreciated about my time working in the district with very various iterations of our board over the 15 years that I've been here is, um, the complex, uh, discussions that we have, um, and, um, the depth of those discussions, uh, I think really sets this board apart from, you know, um, uh, virtually all other boards. So I just want to thank you again for taking the time to meet, uh, tonight and to discuss this important issue. Um, we've had an opportunity to spend some time with this as well, uh, administratively. We appreciate all the points you brought up. Many of them we've, uh, talked about as well, including the, the county as a whole. Uh, and our work, um, over that time with the Lake County, uh, Health Department. And then also trying to factor in, uh, our local situation, but um, understanding that we don't live under two bubbles in Libertyville and Vernon Hills. And we do have people in the communities, not just our employees moving back and forth. Um, you know, throughout the county and throughout the Chicago metro area, frankly. Um, our recommendation at this point, again,
Precisely superintendent.
Is, and I want to make this clear and everybody's doing a great job of this, but let's make this point before we're going. The board has made a decision to go back to hybrid learning. So what we're really talking about tonight is do we start on the 29th as we, uh, as the board originally, um, decided? Or do we start in an alternative date, uh, based on the discussion that you've had tonight, we've had. And our recommendation at this point, given all of that, uh, would be to, uh, do an adaptive pause uh, for two weeks and move the starting week, uh, to November 16th, uh, which would mean Monday would be teacher day back in school, Tuesday and Wednesday would be teacher, um, um, preparation. And then 19th and 20th would be the first two days uh, back in the building for, um, students. So that would be our recommendation based on the collective conversation, uh, that we've had.
Wait, can I, can I go back through that? You said two weeks, right? So we were going to start on the 29th with teachers back in the building, optionally on the 26th and definitely on the 27th, right?
Right. So.
Then be the week of the ninth.
It would really be moving to four weeks back, Pat, would be the 16th.
Uh.
Right?
No, I don't think so. So you, the 26th then becomes November 2nd.
Pat Grudy president.
Right? That's one week.
Right.
And then to November 9th.
That would be two weeks. The 16th would be three weeks.
Two weeks, right?
Would be in optionally on Monday, the 9th. Officially, November 10th, the students are back, or Wednesday is an asynchronous day or teacher-directed day. I think we said asynchronous. Um, and then the students are back on the 12th and 13th. Is that, is that the recommendation?
Correct. If you didn't have a two-week gap there, right? There weren't two, four weeks in between and you went into the third week. Correct.
The 11th, a day off?
No, well, it's.
11th Veterans Day.
So it's not a, it's an in-school day?
Not this year. Yes, it's an in-school day this year because of the peculiarity of the year, Don.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Normally we, we're off Veterans Day. It's the one day that we don't touch out of the building, but, um, with adjusting the schedule for this year, we, we could not do that.
Right. Thank you.
You're talking the 12th of November would be the first day students would be in the building.
Yes.
Okay.
Pat Grudy president.
Okay. So is there any, for any discussion of that?
So that would give before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
That would give the students and teachers two ti- you know, two blues and two oranges, or am I saying that the right way? Uh, each before Thanksgiving break. And then back to.
Wow.
Right? So they would be, have two, two times to be the Tuesday, Thursday, and two times to be the Monday, Tuesday.
Yes, correct.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's actually three, is there not?
Yes, Tom, you're right.
Cause you'd have Fri- Thursday, Friday, the 12th and the 13th would be an orange and a blue day. And then Monday, Tuesday, the 16th, 17th, then the 19th and 20th, I believe. And then I don't, I'm sorry, because I don't have the school calendar.
And then I think still the 23rd and 24th are the Mon- the next Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So they would have.
So it is either, it's either a holiday or an asynchronous day.
Correct.
Right. So, but I mean, it would be, uh, two weeks of doing where the kids are actually, yeah.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of ti- it's a little, you know, it's a bit of a, it's a little bit of a chunk. It's not as long as they would have had, but it's oh, just in time to get things kind of rolling and.
Well, and, and, and with that, it would, it would be important if we went this direction, it would be important that we. It would be important that we set up a data, you know, a review point, right? So to see how data is tracking. So within, within that window, we'd, we'd want to do a touch base again. Uh, to see where we're at and how we're tracking. Everything is good. Thumbs up. You know, if there's some issues, then we can talk about that.
Pat Gruddy, President.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so really, I, I think it boils down to two options. We can wait for a couple more days of data and decide whether or not we want to stick with the 29th. Or we can, um, decide tonight that we want to officially, uh, move this out.
I'd like to, uh, decide tonight.
Okay. Um.
Kevin Huber School Board. Kevin Huber School Board.
Kevin, you just went on mute.
Yeah, no, I didn't want you guys to get interrupted. Uh, obviously I've made my position known in terms of I would like to wait for more data. Uh, with that being said, I do have a question for John and Tom and maybe even Prentice to that extent. If we do push this thing back, could there be any consideration to having a smaller subgroup starting to go into the buildings, into the teachers' classes, so they can learn how to manage kids in the class and kids at home? Ie at a point. And again, we're only talking three, four kids. We're not talking community spread here. But with those kids in the, in Vernon Hills would be even easier because of the number of kids that have chosen to go remote versus in class. But at least on that day, when we get the full A or the orange and blues in, we would have a lot of the kinks worked out and would not lose that time. Is that, has that even been thought about? Is it doable? Is it, don't even do it? Uh, things of that nature.
Tom and John, I'll let you start. Do you understand what Kevin's asking?
Yeah, I think.
We could do some practice.
John Gilley, Yau, Principal.
He's asking for a little bit of a trial run. I would say we're already trial running with many of the courses with students with special needs. They're in there uh, on a block basis, mostly, mostly Monday, Tuesday blocks, but, but some in there uh, Thursday, Friday blocks as well. So there is that, um, there is that happening, Kevin. I, I would say, you know, the one thing that we probably wouldn't have in place is busing. Uh, so, so travel might be an issue. We might, you know, if we were to say, are there teachers that, that are interested in, in getting in there and trying that, I'd, I'd be, uh, I'd be interested in volunteers to see if there are any staff that want to, but I, you know, I, is it a, is it a manageable logistic thing? I think so. Uh, how practical is it? And would we have um, some staff that would want to? I guess we could, we could wait and see.
I think my fear would be though, that then we're essentially violating the reason we're delaying to begin with, which was we wanted to keep people out of the buildings to prevent community spread. And doing our parts with that. So, um, I agree with John, like we have, in addition to our students with special needs, we have a number of fine arts classes, a number of CTE classes right now, um, already coming back and we're, we've, we've had, um, meetings at our building where we're mining information from those individuals and using that to educate the rest of our staff and adapt our professional learning experiences. Um, so I think, you know, the, we, we're showing that we can do that. Um, the question is just, would we want to be doing that when a decision was made to support larger issues of community health, that we want to reduce opportunities for virus spread by keeping our buildings, um, uh, sparsely populated.
And Tom, could I ask, just practically speaking, um, how would you select three to five students? How, how would you?
It would be a, it would be a, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I, I shouldn't have interrupted, but, um, yeah, that would be a huge, it would be a huge challenge for us. I mean, we, I would say we would just continue in that, my recommendation there, if that was our charge, would be to just continue with the students that we have been bringing back. Because for every class we bring back, it, we have to vet, okay, who are the students that are coming back? Um, which ones need bus transportation? Which ones need to be on campus for beyond just that one individual period because they have a class backing up to it? And they don't have the ability to travel home in time to make that next period class and where do we put them in study halls? So it, it would be, um, it would be something that, you know, we're, we're doing, uh, but it would be very challenging to do.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Uh, I'm, I guess I'm going to have to push back. Uh, my main concern with pushing back is that we are not going to get enough good information to be able to make as a board a decision if hybrid was even feasible to move into second semester. Uh, if we can't even beta or sample something, meaning use seniors, use juniors, use sophomores that can drive. Two or three kids a class, ask the teachers to go back to their classroom and, and have those kids in class while they're teaching remote. If we can't even achieve that over the next month, then I, I don't, I don't know the success we're going to have with hybrid. I, while I appreciate we are doing it with the special ed. Not every teacher is doing it. And the concern here is that the teachers, when we flip this in, the teachers are going to have, and, and rightly so, they're going to have issues. They just are. It's hard. It's not easy. If we can beta this, so when they flip the switch, whatever date we do, that's a win, that, that's, that's a win.
But Kevin, I don't, I don't know that a couple of days is going to make, I'm not sure I understand what you mean. We're not going to have time to evaluate this for next semester. I mean, if this goes according to the recommended plan, we're going to have from, uh, basically November 12th until the end of the semester. So we'll get, we'll get the kinks worked out of this before we start second semester. And I think to pick up another couple of days is probably not going to appreciably impact that. I mean, I, I think I see what you're saying. You're trying to get a, I'll say a good start on the 12th. Um, by getting people to sort of dry run it. I think what John's saying is if somebody wants to do that and they can figure it out, they've got three kids that want to come in, I guess we're not going to stop them if they want to do that, but.
Pat Gruddy, President.
I don't know. I, I, I think it's going to dilute our efforts here a little bit, but.
Just, just one, just one comment and not to, to debate the merits of, of the conversation back and forth, but, um.
Princess Lee Superintendent.
You know, part of the reason for the Tuesday and the Wednesday before the teachers to come back is to, um, learn and to learn from each other and to do that testing. I think I can speak, you know, without question for Rita and Tom and John are instructional leaders. Um, and I think I can speak for our teachers that they'll be ready to make that pivot. Um, when we make that pivot. And then each day we do that, just like remote, we're going to get better and better and better over a period of time. I, I don't think there's any, we don't have any question of whether our teachers can, can do this. Uh, and then get better at it, uh, in that, uh, delivering in that instructional model over a period of time. And I, I don't think we have any question that'll happen. Our, uh, teachers stepped up, uh, to meet the challenge that we placed before them in remote learning. Uh, and they will continue to grow in, uh, that e-school model over the course of the year, anytime we have to be in it. Uh, and hopefully never, once we can get back into hybrid, hopefully we'll never have to go back to e-school. But we're going to be using e-school as a component in that. And we'll get better and better at hybrid because uh, that's the staff that we've hired here. That's the staff that we've worked with. Uh, that's the staff that we're leading here and they, and they will step up to this challenge as well. And we will work through, you know, whatever issues that we have with it. So I, that I can say with confidence. And I believe, and I'm looking at Rita and Tom and John, uh, they would say exactly the same thing to that. So, and again, not to, not to, you know, debate the merits of the conversation that's going back and forth, but that I can tell you without question.
Don Carmichael School Board.
All right. I'm struggling, uh, because we are pushing forward, um, towards this hybrid model. Uh, and I can, I, I feel the momentum, uh, going towards trying to get us back into the building. My position hasn't changed. I don't think that it's wise for us to be back in the building anytime, uh, until we have gotten a good handle on the pandemic. I personally would like to wait until second semester before we got back into the building. And then when I heard Lisa say tonight, uh, you know, the board voted, uh, four to three, and I respect my colleagues. Um, and I, uh, I support the vote. You know, that's one of the, the big things that you read about when you're, uh, trying to learn how to be a board member. And, you know, I'm the junior member on this board. Um, the, the plans, I think everybody has worked very, very diligently towards, and I would hate to see any of that go to waste, but I have to tell you from a teacher's perspective, what we are doing right now, learning remotely is actually teaching students. And when I saw letters saying, why aren't the teachers teaching? I couldn't understand why those letters were coming to us because our teachers are doing a great job. They are doing the work and kids are learning. And to look at the, the desires of, um, teachers or, excuse me, of students and parents right now to get back to what we want. Man, we all want that. We all want to be back where, where it was, where we could be together and where the learning was great. The learning is not great now. But it is safe and it is consistent. I will have a hard time supporting a motion tonight that says we're going to go back remote, even though that's what the board decided earlier. So I, I'm going to drag my heels on this one. It feels like we are in a race to get back into the building. And we're pushing, pushing, pushing that direction. And I think educationally speaking, it's not the way to go.
Pat Gruddy, President.
Okay. But to be clear, so, um, when we made the decision, we made the decision knowing frankly, that there was a trade-off pure, from a purely educational perspective to try to address some of the social and emotional aspects that are also an important part of being in high school, recognizing full well that it's not a return to normal. Um, so I would hope that we're actually, I think, and I think Prentice made this point. I mean, the discussions we're having here, I believe are not so much to overturn the prior decision.
I understand.
Okay. And, and, and Don, your points are still very valid, but I don't think it's our intent to overturn the last decision. It's, but it is really to rethink whether or not October 29th is the right time to actually implement it. Okay? Um, feel free to challenge that, but, but that, that's.
No. What I was putting out there was it's going to come to a vote and there's a good chance that I'm going to say no.
Yeah.
And then the reason that that's going to happen is because I, I don't agree with the premise to begin with, that we should be going back in.
Underst-
Uh, I just felt like I needed to explain where I am, that I'm still struggling with this.
Okay. And Donna, understood. And let, let me be, you know, be clear. I'll tell you, one, one of the reasons that I, and I think we value you as a board member, is you bring a very good perspective. Um, as a former teacher, that all of us need to consider. Okay. So, um, even in a situation like this where, uh, let's say when we took the vote, yours was in the minority decision. I think your perspective is important. Um, and extremely important and valuable for us to consider. Okay? I don't want there to be any, any doubt about that. Okay. Are there any other?
Yeah, real quick to, to Don's point and, and I respect his opinion as well. And I, 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 you know, I respect the, 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 the work that all the teachers are doing, both in our district and in districts across the, the, this county, the state, the country. Um, I want to be clear though, that tonight.
Jim Batson VP.
By doing nothing or by not affirming a different date, what we're saying is we're moving forward with starting with kids back in the building next week. So just to be clear, if we were to make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation, and that is pushing off the, 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 the start date by two weeks and reassessing sometime between now and then. Um, by not voting for that, we're saying we're voting for bringing the kids back in the building next week. So I just want to, you know, I.
And Jim, that's precisely my struggle.
Oh, I agree. I, I understand. Yeah.
Thank you.
So a good point, Jim. I mean, I guess I would, I would, uh, I would ask. To me, it's going to come down to one of two things. One, we, we either have a motion tonight to actually move this out and, and accept the recommendation of the administration, or two, we would agree that we would revisit this. What day did we say we were meeting again? Monday, right? We would agree to revisit this. I, i- if the answer was no, I mean, if that motion was made, uh, if we make a motion to accept the dis- uh, the administration's recommendation, if that motion is defeated, um, I'd like to propose that the default then becomes, we would discuss this again Monday, when we get the data for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um, and at that point, make a decision again, yes or no, are we ready for implementation on the 29th? I, I, I personally could not leave here tonight if that motion is, is defeated to, to assume we're going to implement on the 29th, because I need to see the next couple of days at a minimum.
Well, I, I, I would challenge you on that in that by Monday night, the trains already left the station. We've already started down the path with the days, the, the Tuesday, Wednesday, with the Monday.
I understand that.
That all, that, that plan is already put in place. So I believe it would be disruptive to, to, to try to stop it after the trains already left the station.
Although keep in mind, Monday's optional for people to go in. Tuesday's the first required day back in. So I, I, to me, it's very disruptive. All right? Um, and we'll have people on the edge of their seat trying to figure out whether going in or not on Tuesday, which I don't know. Maybe it's just me. I don't think we need to increase anxiety at this point.
Pat Gruddy, President.
But I, I don't think I could leave here tonight if the motion's defeated, saying we're still going in on the 29th, because I want to see the data. And I think, I think for me, um, any final implementation of the hybrid should require us to not trigger an event that would cause us to go from say, the hybrid model to virtual, meaning seven consecutive days, um.
Karen Lundstedt Secretary.
Can we, um, say at least, you know, with some clarity, what dates we will actually be looking at data in between? If this does go forward and we move to postpone, um, you know, are we going to look at it Monday, the second? Are we going to look at it Monday, the second and Wednesday, the fourth? You're just, I, I think we need some clarity as to when we're going to revisit.
So I, I will, I mean, I, I'll definitely, I mean, I will provide it, an update for sure by Monday. All right. As I said, I think the earliest Libertyville will be back in the hybrid zone is Friday. Um, and sometimes the reporting of data over the weekend actually doesn't happen. That's why there was a change in data from this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think the earliest we're actually going to get another set of meaningful data to make a decision or, or data that would inform a decision because it'd be substantially different than tonight would, would be next Monday night.
Pat, and I think what Karen's saying is if, if the recommendation went forward tonight, we're in that first week of November. Would we come back and take a, you know, kind of do a holistic look again? Say, hey, we're good. We're going to, yes, we're going to start on the night.
Yeah.
That is, that is what I meant.
Yeah. I mean, to me, every, because I mean, I found today useful. I mean, I thought I was doing the right thing by giving you guys the data early this afternoon, only to look at it tonight. It was all different. Um, so it seems to me that an update every, call it late Monday afternoon, early Monday evening is really the right thing to do. That's when the most good data is there. So if we did an update on the, on the second, right? And we're planning, I mean, that's basically a week ahead of us pulling the trigger on things. If we see things are trending in that virtual zone, um, with a risk of staying there and triggering an event move, I'm assuming, I'm assuming Libertyville goes back to hybrid by the end of this week. Okay? If in the following week, we see they're trending up in the virtual zone, all right, there would be alarms there for sure. And I think that should cause us to have another conversation about whether or not we can implement the following week.
Well, we have committee meetings on Monday, uh, November 2nd. So that is actually, because of November, it's all pushed up. So that could be an opportune time, Pat. And if the data's in, would certainly be in by, let's say, five o'clock that day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We meet. And that would be a good time to probably just do a review and see how things are going.
Yeah. No, I think so. I think that would keep us at least a week ahead. I mean, and I think that's, that's the minimum we should do. All right. So let me ask, is there a, is there a motion then to delay the implementation from, um, and I'm just going to talk about the first in-school day for the students from October 29th to November 12th?
Oh, moved.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. So, uh, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Wait, can you say, can you say exactly what that motion was again? I didn't quite.
And it, it's a two week delay to the original implementation plan, which would have students in the building instead of October 29th, they would be in the buildings on Thursday, October 12th.
And the, the plan, but the, the plan would begin on the 9th with.
Optional day for teachers on Monday, the 9th, mandatory day for teachers on November 10th. Optional day for teachers on Monday, the ninth, mandatory day for teachers on November tenth, eleven, um, asynchronous, as our, or, and/or teacher-directed day, students back in the building on the twelfth.
Jim Batson VP.
So essentially.
That assumes a review of the data on the next two Mondays.
Yeah. And again, for the public who always wants to know, you know, what would it take for us to move that out? I, I think in general, I'm suggesting, look, when there are, when there's a seven consecutive day movement into the alternate zone, I'll call it, um, that actually puts at risk, I think, the start date. Doesn't mean we wouldn't, you know, I mean, I'd love to think this is black and white, and you can just push a button and it tells you what to do. It's not that, it's not that clean. Um, but I think in general, if we were to start seeing five or six consecutive days where uh, both our Libertyville and Vernon Hills data, as well as the Lake County data, are all trending in the virtual learning zone, people should be worried that maybe we're gonna need to push this out again. Which again, none of us, I want to be really clear, none of us want to do.
For sure.
Even though frankly, a lot of us, let's be honest, we probably all acknowledge it would be easier to do, okay? But that's not what we're being asked to do. We're not being asked to do the easy thing here. We're being asked to do the right thing. Okay, but I mean, I, I don't know what I could do to convince people. We don't want to keep the kids out of school. That's not what we're trying to do. And it's, it's not a political thing. I haven't heard anybody talk about political stuff on this. Um, so, okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Huber.
I knew you went out of order, cause you guys, oh, you know I was gonna say, no, you put guys in.
The random order.
We're waiting for you to surprise us, Kevin.
No surprises, Prentice, no.
Okay. And Donna, I just want to clarify, your vote was a yay, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Clarify, it does, the, the voting does, it is random. It's not, you know.
We, we randomize it with every roll call, just so everybody knows, so it's not this.
Just for the public to understand that, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, is that everybody, Carol?
Yes.
All right, so that motion carries. So that means we've officially agreed to move out the start date to November, again, first day, students in the building, November twelfth.
Right.
Okay. Now, to Kevin's point, uh, that gives everybody a little extra time to prepare. All right. I know we'll use that smartly, wisely, um, and hopefully it really helps so that we can actually get an even better start than we could have on October twenty-ninth. Okay?
Pat Grudy, President.
And, and again, let's just hope, I mean, again, my plea to the community is the same as it's always been. I, I've said this to some people on the phone and then emails. A lot of people ask me, what can I do to help? And my response is always the same, which is please do any and everything you can do to help us control the spread of the virus, okay? Um, and you know what it, face masks, hand washing, social distancing. Um, I know in Chicago yesterday, Mayor, Mayor Lightfoot was even saying, or not Mayor Lightfoot, the uh, head of the Health Department said, don't even invite anybody over your house. They don't want, they don't want anybody over your house, okay?
Pat, can I inject, in addition to the measures that you mentioned, getting tested Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, the uh, thirty-first are also things you can do to support the community?
Yeah, absolutely. Please, please help support that effort. As I said, I'd really like to overwhelm the two testing sites. Um, that might be frustrating, but that would be a wonderful thing. It shows the community's support for working together with us. Um, and I, I, I think, I think the best statement from the community over the next couple of days that we're all in this together would be to actually just overwhelm these two testing sites, okay? And I know you'd be frustrated and be frustrated if you're not one of the first five hundred in line. Um, but if we have that problem, I can assure you, we're gonna do everything we can to get another five hundred, and if we need to, another five hundred, another five hundred. And we will not rest to try to get something in the way of routine testing, um, if it's at all manageable. Um, we've looked at some of the other programs that some of the other schools are doing, and, and, and I've got some real concerns about what some of them are doing. So that's why we haven't chosen some of the options that you probably read about, all right? So uh, we're in this together. Uh, we're committed to getting the kids back in school. We want to do that. The teachers want to do that. The administrators want to do that. I, I guess the last thing I can do is just actually, please be patient. Um, and please be supportive of the efforts, because as I said at the beginning, there are a lot of people working extremely hard to make this happen. And it's very challenging.
Pat, can we, can we finish with kind of where we started?
Yeah.
So just for the seven hundred and fifty people that are still with us and people that may watch this again. So the board has made the decision to return the district to hybrid learning. The um, board vote on the recommendation tonight was to do an adaptive pause for two weeks. It's not to change the decision to go to hybrid learning. Because the board made a decision and we're committed to do that. So I want to just people to hear that one more time uh, before we leave the message, or before we leave the meeting tonight. And thanks to all of you again for getting together on such short order, uh, as we all know, um, when we get recommendations like this, uh, it travels like wildfire uh, immediately, and there is a lot of anxiety and angst, questions, concerns that, that come as a result of that. So we appreciate the board's um, um, availability and willingness to come together tonight uh, to discuss the, review and discuss the issue as always. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see.
Hey Carol, I want to make, Carol, you got my no vote, right? We, we.
Yeah.
I want to make sure you got them. Okay. Thanks.
All right, um, Carolina, the agenda in front of me, and next is just the move to adjourn, is that correct?
Permit.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don moved.
Second.
I can.
All right, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy. Did you say aye?
Did, aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney. Oh, Casey Rooney.
Casey's on mute.
You're muted. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Aye. Batson.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, everybody good? All right, thanks, everybody. Good night. Thanks again to the, all the people that locked in tonight.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Good night.
Hey, everyone.